Will now call to order the Cumberland County Salary Board and the Board of Commissioners meeting. We'll begin with the Salary Board and a roll call, please.
Commissioner Nederer, I am here.
Commissioner Fashi.
I'm here.
Commissioner Eichelberger.
Controller Whitaker.
Here.
This is the portion of the agenda where we open it up to public comment. If there's anyone online wishing to make public comment, please use the raise your hand feature. I don't see anyone in the room. Is there anyone online? I think everybody here is for other business, so. We will move on to the approval of the minutes of the November meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 6.
All seconded. It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Next, we'll move to the approval of the Salary Board actions.
I'll make a motion to approve all the Salary Board actions except the District Attorney and the Courts.
All seconded. It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We will then ask for the.
I move to approve the Salary Board recommendation for the Courts.
I'll second the motion.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next, we'll move to the District Attorney.
And I move to approve the Salary Board recommendations for the District Attorney's Office.
I'll second the motion.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. We will move on. Is there any other business to come before the Salary Board at this time?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Al. We are adjourned from that. We will go into the Board of Commissioners meeting and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Begin with the roll call, please.
Lauren.
Commissioner Nederer, I am here.
Commissioner Fashi, I'm here.
Commissioner Eichelberger.
This is the portion of this agenda where we open it up to public comment. Again, there does not appear to be anyone in the room interested in making public comment. Is there anyone online? Nope. Okay, very good. We'll go into the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. The consent agenda is a list of routine items that do not appear to be controversial in nature and do not seem to require any additional discussion. If discussion is desired on any particular item, that would be Agenda Items number four through Agenda Item number 11. Now would be the time to make that request. During the same night, Commissioners, I would request approval of the consent again.
To make the motion, I move to approve.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
That then takes us to the regular agenda. And this is a list of non-routine items that will be discussed and may be acted upon individually. And we'll start with Agenda Item 12, when we have our District Attorney here to discuss the handing over of two checks.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I am pleased to be with you today on an opportunity to, instead of being asked for money, to provide back to the county money. As the Commissioners are aware, the District Attorney's Office in 2022 formed a human trafficking task force. And since that time, we have been doing operations and investigations and prosecutions of human trafficking here in Cumberland County. To date, as a result of this, we have made 141 arrests. 127, 126 arrests of those arrests were for customers of sex trafficking. Those customers are the fuel that fire human trafficking. We've also shut down seven massage, illegal Asian massage parlors, with one of our prosecutions resulting in one of the operators of the massage parlor getting a 16-year to 32-year sentence in prison. As a result of those operations, the law allows us to forfeit money. And to date, we have forfeited over $600,000. The law allows the District Attorney's Office of that money that is forfeited to reimburse the county for any expenses that went into those investigations. So I'm pleased today to hand over to the County General Fund $221,534.68 for two separate checks, one check going from expenses that were spent at our lab to do a lot of the testing that was necessary during those investigations. And then one to go for the salaries, a portion of the salaries of the detectives that were involved in that investigation. So I have those checks here. And I'm pleased to turn them over to the County General Fund.
Sean, thank you so much for your continued dedication to this, to fighting this, quite frankly. I don't know that there's a lot of other counties in the state of Pennsylvania that have taken the stance that you have as a woman and watching what is playing out on a national level with the trafficking of young girls. I think it's incredibly important, the work that you're doing. And it helps make Cumberland County a much safer place for everyone. So, thank you. And it's wonderful that we receive compensation for the work, the hard work that you're doing. So it makes it the great impact is certainly worth it, but it's really nice to have those efforts acknowledged and quite frankly funded to help make it happen.
Thank you.
And you were honored at Leaders at Lunch on Tuesday, correct?
Yes.
The Department's Office for your work on this particular issue.
Yeah, we're very pleased, not just me, but my office and the detectives and the lab personnel who worked on this case and the YWCA who have partnered with us. Also, last week, we ran another operation where we made 13 additional arrests. And during that operation, we had three individuals from the Arkansas Attorney General's Office come observe and learn how we do these operations so that they can take that information back to Arkansas. So I'm really pleased that we have taken the lead on this issue here in Cumberland County.
Thank you. Samantha, shall we get a picture of him presenting the checks to us? Can we do that? I think if this deserves some certain acknowledgement.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you all for your support. This isn't just something that just happens with the District Attorney's Office. The support that the Commissioners have given us throughout the years that we've been doing this is very much appreciated.
And, and, and we appreciate it. Okay. Oh, are we lighting, lighting issues? The only thing I ask is that you don't share, don't share too many of the details of how these operations are conducted.
I suppose you're gonna want some of that back, right?
Yeah.
Always.
Okay, I'm gonna take a few. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, I move to accept. It's moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Information is made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the formality of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, that takes us to the contracts and grants portion of the agenda, and I'll schedule a sponsor.
Thanks, Casey. Good morning, everybody. Agenda Item 13 is a grant application for the Commissioner's Office, and I'll call on Katie Zimmerman to discuss.
Good morning, Katie.
Good morning, everyone. So we have the opportunity to apply for a second sponsorship request from KDEC. This is an additional $3,000, which would be used to support kickoff celebrations of the 250th year in January 2026.
I have none. Someone like me to approve.
I'll second.
Seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
That takes us to Agenda Item 14. I'll call on Melissa Calvanelly to discuss a contract for administration.
Yes.
Good morning. This is a contract with Midtown Legal Services for counsel to be appointed in guardianship cases with an alleged incapacitated person. This is a new contract. This was a pilot program through the OEJC and a grant through the Office of Children, Youth, and Families in Courts that ran from August of 2023 to August of 2025. That grant has since ended. Pilot program was successful in the courts, and we would like to contract with Midtown to continue that service. The contract is a little off. It's from beginning of November to the end of December, but it's because of the budget not being, at the time, we were putting this together, the budget not being done. The amount listed is actually an annual, not just the three months. I just wanted to clarify. That was not a, we worked out what they would have spent up for the grant if they were under the contract, and that's how we came up with the estimate.
And Melissa, this is a, it's an as needed. See, there's a per case charge, so if you don't end up using all of those funds, they, they will stay in the general fund.
Yeah. And again, we came up with that number. We went back a couple of years and through the pilot program and how many cases they represented and approximately how many hours and just kind of averaged that out.
Then we'll move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
That takes us to Agenda Item 15. I'll call on Beth Tornak and Ron Snowden to discuss a contract with them for ERP.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're asking for a contract addendum for RPI consultants. The total of that addendum was $211,800, and that's split into three pieces. So the first piece is for 274 hours or $54,800 of finishing out our must haves of our project implementation. So those hours have already been used. The second piece is, we are in process of developing a automated contracting process. Right now, we use a paper process, so we'd like to put that process in the system. The process wasn't quite ready for our go-live date of last Monday, so it needs some additional development. So we're asking for additional 285 hours or $54,000, $53,800 to finish out that phase of the project, which we'll be looking to implement hopefully later this year or early 2026. And then the third piece is that we're asking for an additional 500 hours of post-go-live support. So RPI, when they developed our contract, they estimated 500 hours of post-go-live support for 90 days. We'd like their support up through our year end, which is December 31st. So we're asking for additional 500 hours. And those are a, if we need them, so we will, we will pay them if we don't use those hours. So they're, they're just a contingency for us.
So the amount projected is a worst-case scenario using all of the hours.
Correct. That will be using everything.
Okay.
And the same with the contracting process. If we don't need 285 hours, we won't pay for 200 hours. It'll just be those hours that we need.
And if I understand correctly, this automation of the contracting process is going to be a whole lot better for a lot of people involved in that process.
We're hoping so. Yeah.
All right. I will move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. That takes us to Agenda Item 16. I'll call on Holly Sherman to discuss the contract for Human Resources. Good morning, Holly.
It's not an actual increase. The rate that we pay per participant, this is for Cobra, as well as our flexible spending accounts. The rate per account or participant is remaining the same. What is happening is that the monthly minimums are increasing. For Cobra, it's increasing from $85 per month to $100 per month. And just to give you a sense, we, our bill typically runs about $600 a month, so we're not going to be affected by this change in the minimum. And then on FSA, the minimum is going from 50 to 70, and we run about $100 a month on that. So this is for the next three years. The rates will be in place. Just an indication of the monthly minimums that I don't believe will actually impact us.
I move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Holly. Moving on to Agenda Item 17, I'll call on Miranda Melton to discuss the contract addendum for MHIDD. Good morning, Miranda.
Morning. I have one contract for you this morning. This is for IDD. It is for Erie County Care Management. They provide supports coordination services for us, and they have just picked up additional services that they're providing for us, which is driving the increase. This is an increase of $15,857. Any questions?
Do not have any? No, I move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Miranda.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to Agenda Item 18, and I'll call on Stephanie Williams from Planning to discuss a grant addendum. Thank you. Good morning, Stephanie.
Good morning. Thank you. As I'm sure you recall, back in September, we adopted our land partnerships plan, which is funded, which was funded in part through a DCNR grant. As a result of adopting that plan, DCNR has given us an opportunity to request some implementation funds to essentially jumpstart some of the action items that were in the plan. So I went through the plan and found kind of two low-hanging fruit type things that are updating our Conde de Guinnet Water Trail Guide and installing some interpretive signage at the Mount Holly Marsh Preserve. The total cost of those two tasks is $10,849. DCNR would require 50% match of $5,400, roughly $25, of which we have Act 13 funds that we could put toward these activities. They would be eligible expenses. So this would be a request to DCNR to amend our grant agreement to allow these two tasks to be added to the grant and to give us another, a year essentially, to complete these activities.
Any questions?
No. I love how you're looking to bring in every dollar you can, Stephanie, to assist with this process. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
I move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to Agenda Item 19, and I'll call on Robin Wykel to discuss the contract addendum for tax assessment. Good morning, Robin.
Good morning. This is our yearly homestead postcard and invitation processing. Approximately 57,000 postcards will go out, letting taxpayers know that they are currently approved. And as long as that remains true, they don't have to do anything. And then there's all but 27,000 invitations going out to potentially eligible taxpayers. They will have until March 1 to submit the application for approval. And this is a 100% reimbursed by the School District addendum.
Any questions?
No, I move to approve. It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to Agenda Item 20, and I'll call on Katie Isley to discuss the contract for the Tredele's Office.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm coming before you today, not with the new contract, but because the company's name has changed. So this is our hotel tax software that we've been using for the past year. And I also wanted to share that we negotiated the price down by $1,000 through this name change.
Very good. Any questions for Katie?
No, I move to approve.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to Agenda Item 21. I'll call on John Bitter to discuss a grant application for vector control. Good morning, John.
Good morning, everybody. This is our annual regular county grant that we applied to the state for West Nile mosquito disease-borne control. So for next year, it's relatively the same as it was this year. It's $200 more, actually.
Any questions for John?
No, I, I move to approve.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And that, that concludes the contracting grant section. I'll hand it back over to Stacy. Thank you, Angela. That takes us then to Agenda Item 22, and we have Bob Shively to discuss a capital project request for public safety. Hi, Bob.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, requesting your approval of a capital project request for VMware 8, which is the virtual server management platform running our computer-aided dispatch system. The upgrade is needed to continue our critical security patching and updates. It was coordinated with Mark and Adam from IMTO. And the total price includes both the cost of the VMware itself, as well as an implementer from Hexagon, our CAD vendor, to install and configure the server upgrades on the CAD platform. Total cost is $40,000.
Any questions for?
I move to approve.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bob, I did, this is a, this is an item that was placed in the capital project here, right?
Yeah, we, this is basically an interim fix for security updates. With moving to the regional CAD project initiative, we're trying to basically fill the gap between our current CAD system without doing the major upgrade. When we looked at the upgrade to replace all the servers and equipment, that was about $1 million. So we're trying to do a regional effort with the three counties so that we can leverage grant money through the 911 interconnectivity fund grant. And that would help offset then and be able to do a regional CAD upgrade using that grant funding. So that's kind of where we're headed for now. But to do the regional CAD upgrade, that's probably a two-year timeline at least, until that can be all reprogrammed and finalized.
Thank you for taking those interim steps and trying to look for other solutions that will, quite frankly, hopefully save the county money in the long run through that collaboration. If there's anything the board can do to assist you in those efforts with the other counties involved, please let us know.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, that takes us then to Agenda Item 23, which is Commissioners' liaison reports, and Commissioner Nederer, we'll start with you.
Okay, I'll try and be brief. There were several meetings. It's been a busy couple of weeks. I attended Senator Rothman's Veterans Breakfast, and I wanted to say a shout out to our own Kater Callum, who runs our Veterans Affairs Department. She pulled together, quite frankly, in the 11th hour program here in the historic courthouse that was beautiful. And deeply appreciate you doing that, and I know everyone in attendance really enjoyed it. I participated in the Papers Conference over in Harrisburg and attended a citizen-sponsored data center event in Middlesex Township. There is a ton of misinformation being spread on this topic, and I know Kirk Stoner and KDEC are working to get together a neutral, fact-based forum that is going to be hopefully in January. They continue to try and fine-tune the dates. There's a lot of different speakers. They're trying to arrange schedules. So I will encourage everyone, once that date is known, we need to get it out and get it published. There's so much interest and a lot of discussion around the topic, which we appreciate. I participated in a Penn State Ag webinar on data centers, which again was very informative. I will be giving those, that podcast, and I'll be happy to share it with everyone. And both Gary and I attended Capcom. Our Ag Reservation Board was canceled. I attended the KDEC Board of Directors meeting, and Commissioner Fashi, Commissioner Eichelberger was on, so I'll say for you. The Board approved a budget for 2026, a cooperation agreement with Messiah University, a resolution to submit the 19 LSA Category 4 grants. And they announced there is a holiday open house on December 5 at 8:30. I believe we were all received that invitation. And the REC group, I just wanted to give a shout out to, to them. They're providing, one of their folks is attending every board meeting now and providing a really great update as to what's happening within that group. It's, I think it's going a long way for folks to understand at the board level. And REC will be offering a tour for the Board of the Frog Switch site of the KDEC Board, but this Board is also included. I believe it is December 3, but I will confirm, in the morning, I will confirm that in another email if, if anyone would be interested. Additionally, I attended the KDEC Tourism Meeting, and they vetted and recommended for grants to go to the Finance Committee, two for Shippensburg University, one for Cumberland Valley Rail Trail, and one for Destiny Dairy Barn. They committed, the committee approved several modifications to grants that were, they were de minimis in nature. And Ashley provided some updates on reports of the grants in process. So it is, it's good to see that once they make these grants, there's inspections, there's a lot of process that they can't just give them the check and it's done. There's a lot of follow-up involved, and they're doing that quite diligently. They've distributed, just as an update, 8,000 of the 20,000 pool that was set aside for America 250 sponsorships. And we are all invited, and it should be on our calendars, to the bell unveiling here on the December 19. Additionally, I participated in the Cumberland Perry Drug and Alcohol Commission meeting. There was a lot of housekeeping items going on there. There were bylaw updates, meeting schedules, and officer slates that were being determined. But I did want to give a shout out and a thank you to Ken McGarvey, who has served on that Board for a very long time with distinction. And he was, he's unfortunately leaving and will be sorely missed. And then this morning, I was at the Planning Commission meeting where the Board did not approve a request from Middlesex Township. And it was a zoning text amendment, which they declined to, to support. They did approve a zoning ordinance amendment regarding a Texaco road corridor and a comprehensive plan amendment on the Texaco Road Corridor for Silver Springs Township. Additionally, they approved a South Newton Township comprehensive plan. And I do want to give a shout out as well to Steve Hoffman in the Planning Department. He played a really outsized role in helping South Newton get this to the table. It's a very small municipality, and I will tell you, the plan is available on our website. It is really good. Or, and very thoughtful, and I love it that that's a major role that our planning department plays in support of all of the municipalities across the county. Additionally, two properties in Dickinson Township were included in the agriculture security area. I believe both, one is a, is, they're both contiguous to Preserve Farms, but I suspect that they have both applied for our farmland preservation. And we, the Board will supply a letter of support to the People's Homestead Recommendation for Southampton Township. There's a, a property that, there's a group that is trying very hard to preserve. It's the People's Homestead, and it is the home of Captain, he was a captain in the Cumberland County Militia. And it is unfortunately in a zone that is zoned commercial, and they're encouraging, they want to encourage the municipality to implement a historic preservation ordinance. And last update on the Planning Commission, I was, we were informed there were 16 applicants for the one vacant seat that the Board will be facing. I know, I love that people want to be engaged, and it is a tremendous and engaged Board. So they, the membership committee will be reviewing those and, and interviewing folks, so stay tuned. And we will have that come before us probably at some point as well. That is it. Sorry. Good morning, Cumberland County. I would remind you to use the Cumberland County Library System. You know, the holidays are coming up. You might have some extra time to visit the library, read a book, do all the fun things that are there. I was out at the Western Cog for their meeting. Commissioner Nederer, I was really glad to hear that our, that we've got a team putting together some, an information session on data centers because there, there was a lot of interest in data centers in the township. Southampton Township reported that there is a company that would like to build a data center in that township. Their, their Board visited an 800,000-square-foot data center in Loudoun County, Virginia, and they were pleasantly surprised by how quiet and clean the facility was. And the water used to cool that center is a closed loop system that took 27 days to fill initially. So I think that getting this kind of information out to people is very, very helpful because this is not going away. The interest is in, in data centers in Cumberland County will not be going away. Southampton Township is also, they want to make sure that their zoning ordinance is ready for, for this potential data center. So they're being very proactive in, in how they think about this. Corey Waddell was nominated an elected president of the Western Cog for next year, and Larry Barrett was nominated an elected vice president for 2026. I went to the Simpson Library to their annual elected official breakfast. That was really great. It was Sue Erdman's final breakfast before she retires, so it was good to see her. And I got to meet the new director. Her name is Lizzie, and I'm sorry, I've forgotten her last name, but she is very passionate about libraries. I think she'll be, she's an excellent addition to that library.
Um, I went out to the Hampton Township Veterans Memorial um to their service uh right before Veterans Day. I think I've said, have I, I think I mentioned this before, but I mean, it's just such an excellent park, such a great place to go and and honor our veterans. Um, I participated in the AOPC Virtual Conference, at least as much of it as I could. Um, doing that virtually, I think, is very difficult. I have done the conference before in the room and it's it's just far more engaging. But I did get a couple of takeaways from that, um particularly from the judges that were there. I was in North Middleton Township um at the Volunteer Fire Company for their tanker thirty nine dedication. Um, and that was dedicated to the memory of Lonnie L. McHillip Senior. Firefighter McHillip held the positions of deputy fire chief, assistant fire chief and trustee during his thirty four year fire career. He passed away on May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, and he was so loved by that, by the community there. And he certainly was a mentor to so many people um that attended that event. So I was, I was glad to be there. I was sorry that I missed the leaders at lunch recognizing the DA's office and the YWCA for their work to combat human trafficking in Cumberland County. And that is all I have, Stacy.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Eigerger.
Okay, just a handful of items. Um, I did attend the Veterans Day ceremony put on by the VFW in Mechanicsburg, Mechanicsburg Cemetery. It was a blustery day to say the least, but um that is a, it's small but hearty gathering of folks who it's a very nice ceremony. It's uh probably the smallest ceremony in the county. No cameras, no reporters, anything of that nature, but um there, that VFW always does a very nice ceremony. And um uh it's worth noting that if even in those challenging weather conditions, everybody still turned out at uh historically uh consistently uh because of the importance of the day. So it was very nice being there. The Monday, of course, was the Capital Cog that was uh just provided um an opportunity for some updates. And um particularly I spoke about the uh schedule regarding the up, uh update on the P twenty five. Of course, we're, you know, looking at some schedule modifications there, so make sure that we're getting that message out and uh a few other miscellaneous items. Let's, the uh uh last week was Bladed Property and Reinvestment Board. That was fairly standard. Uh, the, there are two properties that were certified as blighted and a move, they will now move on to the planning commission there for their, their next phase of the role. That was fairly brief. Uh, let's talk mental health here. So we have obviously the big topic on everybody's mind. This advisory board meeting is, is the saccharine, well, it's immune time, I'll be there. So uh, the, I do have the report that Annie puts together for the advisory board. So I'll just pick a couple of items off there. It's most update. I just got this yesterday. So um, so of course, we're all familiar, the budget was approved Wednesday, November twelfth. So the, we've had a four month impasse. Everyone is delighted to see that come to an end. Uh, now reality sets in. This is, the early analysis from C cap uh shows that MH funds receiving overall in one point nine percent decrease. While most agencies were flat funded, mental health, when you count everything, uh did get a decrease. Now, the good news uh as it were, is that county uh MH, the base funds that we count on for case management are untouched. They are flat funded, but they were not part of this cut. This cuts will take place on the DHS Human Services Department side of things. Uh, so they're still waiting for a lot more information as I believe all of our human service departments are. And next week, of course, I believe we have our human services policy team meeting here. So the commissioners will probably get a lot more detail by that point on what's going on. So um also to be discussed, we're all familiar with Spotlight PA and uh their articles are featured in a number of papers, including uh Penn Live locally. They've been publishing some excellent articles on the history of of funding for county mental health programs uh as well as the consequences of the significant unmet needs of base that's out there. So uh I, there's a link to those. If anybody wants that, happy to provide that. The also uh some of the contracts will be initiated today, will be reinitiated. Again, they're on a six month contract basis. Um, so they can manage the appropriation as more facts develop and uh we can make the best possible use of funds in keeping with the the approach adopted last year. Uh, also, I mentioned this before, the AOPC summit is uh annually brings together the courts and the mental health system to support the work between the entities. Uh, our folks were presenting for Region Six, which includes us regarding best practices for crisis intervention. And of course, part of that was uh discussion on the Crisis Walk-in Center and how that's progressing. One of the topics, statewide CIT conference, October twenty eighth, twenty nine. The, the staff presented there with Council of State Governance regarding involvement in the national stepping up initiative. Um, once again, you know, our folks, Cumberland Perry folks are uh being sought out as an example of how to make the best of extremely difficult situations. So we're proud of them in that regard. So the um Walk-in Center, we're all familiar with that. We'll get a more detailed update soon, I'm sure. Uh, Annie, let me know that they continue to meet weekly with the Connections Health Solutions folks that are running the the center um so that we can address uh issues that latent issues that emerge and just build a collaboration culture that needs to exist between public and private providers here. Uh, Connections, as mentioned, they're continuing to work on pure workforce. They did a hiring event. Um, they have been challenged, of course, in the current marketplace uh to adequately staff. There's been a major challenge for them here. So uh they are working on that diligently. That probably won't solve itself anyway, but uh on the, the long term structured residency program's been underway for a while. This is what we're doing uh in partnership with Franklin Fulton Counties and Cumberland Perry. Franklin Fulton actually had money left over for twenty four, twenty five. Uh, I guess that's block grant money that can be moved. They're gonna devote those funds to the LTSR project. So Department of Human Services already approved this. So the, the funds being transferred to us for that project are four hundred twenty two thousand four oh nine, which is a very well uh situation that will help offset the cost that have been increasing, the estimate on that project's been increasing mostly due to tariffs. And uh the township also requested sidewalk installation there. Sidewalk installation is uh not a cheap thing, especially when you do a lot of it. Uh, I mean sidewalk replaced in front of my house today, so get a sense of that. Uh, staffing, uh, well, of course, the big news, of course, is uh Robin Tolan, who be recently honored for her twenty years of service here, has an upcoming retirement. December twelfth will be her last day of office. I just thought that was worth mentioning. And of course, to honor her, there will be a retirement gathering uh out of the MH office at Allen Road, December fifth. So uh, I don't have a time for that, but they generally do that around lunchtime. So hopefully you can get good attendance at the commissioners and send Robin off on her well deserved retirement. She's been a real gem for this county for the last twenty years. The, I got an update also from Annie Hubert Aging last evening. Same thing, the, you know, budget is is dominating. Hopefully have more information next week. The one thing she could tell me is the Secretary of Aging um told them that the the uh AAA network, the uh uh area aging uh network received ten point seven million dollar increase. We don't know how much of that we're getting. We don't know how that's being distributed yet. So, but uh an increase is an increase. It increases welcome. Hopefully you get a share of that. Uh, again, Tuesday, Human Services Policy Team review, she getting a bunch of stuff on it real quick here on recycling. Uh, Justin gave me an update in regards to House Bill twelve thirty three regarding battery management, which has been uh, you know, before us in discussion mode for a couple of weeks now, I guess. Um, the House Bill was taken up at, right immediately after the state budget was passed. It was a second vote on Monday, it received unanimous support, two oh two to zero. Went to appropriations, appropriations committee voted thirty four to three to pass the bill. Came before the full house on third and final vote. Uh, it did pass, but the one eleven to ninety one along party law. So that's a pretty dramatic shift in the voting, but.
Do you mean the Senate?
Um yes, that probably is, yeah, I'm just reading it off of here, so. Uh, well, the one eleven to ninety one would be the House, right?
The House passed it unanimously to I'm pretty sure it was two, two something. So then it was going to the Senate. That's why I wasn't sure. I haven't heard about what it, what happened in the Senate. So guessing that's.
Came before the full house for a third and final vote, one eleven to ninety one. The, the bill still passed, but uh not with bipartisan support. Uh, saying it had appeared to have, not to support, the level of support that appeared to have at the second vote. He's going to track down some information on, you know, what's going on with that. That's, you know, a pretty dramatic shift and uh, we'd like to know what the trajectory, trajectory on that issue's going to be because it's, it's going to be important. Management, something you've heard about for a long time, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about it because what I'm concerned about, uh, counties may have to play a role in being the collection site for these lithium batteries and I'm, I just don't know that I understand enough of what that would entail. Public safety plays a role, right? So it, it could be very impactful uh to the county, but you know, in public safety, I mean, they talk about lithium batteries catching on fire and then how they, how do they put it out? So we'll follow it. Thank you.
That's all, yeah.
Um, just what, Gary, I wasn't able to tell when, did, were you happen?
Obviously, yeah.
Did, um, was there any update from, from that?
Really not. They were uh discussing, you know, the, the federal shutdown uh and particularly the impacts on the Federal Reserve and the lack of data that they're operating under. There was not, there were no major decisions to review the contracts, but uh
Because I guess the one meeting I had attended it, they had um a lot of their funding, apparently the Head Start Program and others were really in jeopardy and I didn't know if they had gotten any more clarity around that, but I, I just didn't know if there was anything more.
I don't recall anything to discuss on that. Uh, I mean, I can send it over just to make sure. There's something, I'll check my notes because I have a pretty big packet.
Yeah, they, they sent a lot of good info out.
Yeah.
Um, and I agree, I think the aging and IDD were two of the areas that saw an increased funding. So I'm hoping that that will be positive for us and I did read that article on Spotlight PA and I thought it was incredibly well done on the MH system and the items. The one thing that I am concerned about that I saw recently, um and I didn't know if Annie had mentioned it, was that um Connections is opening a location in Montgomery County. And if they are having difficulty with our location, um I'm hoping that resources won't be, be pooled. So uh I guess time will tell, but uh they appear to be expanding within Pennsylvania. Um, and I'll be curious for the update and I didn't know if Annie had mentioned it at all.
It's not mentioned. I can raise it at today's meeting.
That would be great.
I think we're not entirely surprised that they've, they've made noise about expanding in Pennsylvania, which you know, could be good as they spread their fixed costs across all broader base, but um uh also, but it's always the risk that resources get diverted and attention gets diverted. So Cumberland County's a very big county. Sure, they have plenty of issues to be addressed as well and they, they're going to need the staffing just as we do. Uh, so I would imagine uh we're, we're kind of a testbed for, for learning about Pennsylvania's system, which is of course needed to connections folks. So hopefully uh they learn the right lessons and learn well. Montgomery County isn't benefiting at our expense.
I hope so. I'm not, I'm I, I can't wait for the update. Thank you, Stacy.
Yes, thank you, commissioners. Um, and I will note that Robin Tolan's retirement party is eleven thirty to two on December fifth. And we received an email, Trudy is on the ball. She sent the email out this morning. To county employees. Um, so I would, uh, moving on to agenda item twenty four, I would like to report that an executive session was held on November thirteen, twenty twenty five at nine thirty AM regarding personnel. Now I'll ask if there is any other business to come before the board today. Hearing none, seeing none, we are adjourned.